All meeting to order, please. Supervisor Fisher, would you lead us in an invocation?
Let us pray. Dear Lord have me, Father, we thank you for this day and for our many blessings. We remember the men and women of our armed services that are serving throughout the world, protecting our freedoms, and we especially pray for the three that died yesterday and that you would comfort and be with their family and friends and care for them. We also ask your blessing on our schools and our administrators and teachers as they get prepared for the coming school year. We ask for your guidance and direction in our work this evening for the citizens of Frederick County. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Vice Chairman Ewing, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand face flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The opposite of the agenda, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are no changes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor De Haven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
By Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs for the board's consideration. Tab B, resolution of appreciation for Gwenty Monroe. Tab F, memorandum from the county attorney. And resolution, read, notice of claim of Vernon Downs. And tab H, public safety committee report.
Any questions, Mr. Riley? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Ewing, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments. Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
Board of Supervisors comments, are there any? Hearing none, will move on to the minutes of the work session with the school board, July 25, 2012. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the work session with the school board of July 25, 2012.
A motion by Supervisor Collins, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Spicer. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the work session with the school board, July 25, 2012, were approved. Next, committee appointments. First is Parkland Recreation. Shawnee, are we ready?
No, sir.
Community Policy and Management Team, I don't believe we received the recommendation.
No, sir.
Shawnee and Senatorary District Advisory Committee, Supervisor Lofton's not here, so I think we'll pass.
Yes, sir.
Juvenile Detention Center, we have been well-served by Mr. Riley. I assume he may be willing to re-serve.
Yes, sir.
Would have a...
Move reapportment of John R. Riley Jr., county administrator.
A motion by Supervisor De Haven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
Next is the Northern Shandau Valley Regional Commission. Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Tierney serve as representatives, well, as a representative of Mr. Tierney as an alternate. Terms expire 9/32. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I would move that Mr. Eric Lawrence be reappointed and that Mr. Tierney be reappointed as the alternate.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Tierney. Shandau Area Agency on Aging, I know Mr. Riley put out a question, did you get an answer?
She said she will let me know on Friday.
Well, I hope she gives it serious consideration. I think she's done us a good job.
Yes, very good job.
All right, Regional Jail Authority, Mr. Ewing's term is up 10/13/12. As Frederick County Supervisor's representative, what's the pleasure, are you willing to re-serve? Is it, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Fisher, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Ewing.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first request is dated July 18 to authorize the Treasurer to refund rider truck rental the amount of $2,576.23 for the proration of an adjustment to values for personal property taxes for 2011 and 2012. Group of purchase price and change in location has been provided by the taxpayer. The county attorney has reviewed same, and if it's the pleasure of the board, we recommend approval.
Any questions, Mr. Riley? It is your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve rider truck rental refund of $2,576.23 and Williams Recycling Incorporated of $2,570.48.
All right, you have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven. Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is a request from the Frederick County Schools to schedule a public hearing date for fiscal year 13 budget adjustments and to participate in the fall 2012 Virginia Public School Authority, VPSA bond sales. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The School Division is requesting that the board conduct a public hearing with reference to an appropriation request of $6.1 million. The borrowing schedule would be $1 million in the fall of 2012, $2.6 million in the spring of 2013, and $2.5 million in the fall of 2013. The requests for these are for design for the fourth high school, design for the replacement of Frederick County Middle School, and for the partial renovation of James Wood, and for the elementary school additions at Bass Hoover, Evendale, Red Bud Run, and Stonewall Elementary Schools. The recommended date for public hearing would be, I believe, September the 12th, which is the next regularly scheduled board meeting. It's respectfully requested that the board authorize the public hearing.
Questions, Mr. Riley? Hearing on all, is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. This is strictly for the public hearing now.
It's to authorize the public hearing.
Yeah, no appropriation or anything?
No. We can't until we hold a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move for scheduled public hearing, first meeting in September.
All right, we have a motion to honor the request, is there a second?
Second, Mr.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Mr. Riley, that conclude this item?
Yes, sir.
Next is a report from the Joint Finance Committee, and I guess I will give it, there were two items that came before the joint finance. One is the memorandum of understanding, which is up for approval this evening if it's your pleasure. The other item was for information only and had to do with a proposal to do some parking lot alterations in front of the courthouse building, and it basically got sent out for a further study, but those of us there would be glad to answer any questions. On the issue of the memorandum of understanding, are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I think is different from the old one is the fact we made provisions for the election of the chairman. Am I correct on that?
I really don't know.
That's correct. So it's basically the same as in the past, except for that.
This is the ongoing effort that we have to basically create new memorands of understanding for all of our arrangements and modify them as appropriately. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I would make a motion that the board approve the memorandum of understanding as drafted in our package of materials.
Do we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The memorandum of understanding for the Joint Finance Committee is approved. Next, we have a public hearing, outdoor festival permit request of Concern Hotline. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an outdoor festival permit request. It's made by Concern Hotline for the 13th Annual Friday Fish Fry, and this is pursuant to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 86 Festivals. Festival will be held on Friday, September the 7th, 2012, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on the grounds of Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson, 140 Independence Drive, Winchester, Virginia. Property is owned by Joe Bali LLC. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. Riley? Is there a representative here who would like to speak? Any questions for the applicant? Let's see. Magisterial District, are we in here? Shawnee, Supervisor Fisher?
I would move for the, oh, you could do the public hearing.
My apologies. The board will now conduct a public hearing on outdoor festival permit request of Concern Hotline, 13th Annual Friday Fish Fry pursuant to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 86 Festivals, Section 86.3, for an outdoor festival permit, festively held Friday, September the 7th, 2012, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on the grounds of Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson, 140 Independence Drive, Winchester, Virginia, property owned by Joe Bali LLC. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this outdoor festival Seeing no one close the public hearing, now, Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the outdoor festival permit request of Concern Hotline for the 13th Annual Fish Friday Fish Fry.
Do we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer. Chairman votes aye, and the outdoor festival permit request of Concern Hotline is approved. Next is another public hearing, another outdoor festival permit request of Hive Ministries. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an outdoor festival permit of Hive Ministries, Utopia EDM Revival Christian Dance Festival, and this again is pursuant to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 86 Festivals, Section 86-3 permit required. The festival is to be held on August the 24th, 2012, from 12 noon through 12 noon Sunday, August the 26th, 2012, on the grounds of the Cove Campground, 1980 Cove Road, Gore, Virginia. Property is owned by Alexander W.K. McDowell and McDowell Families LLC. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is also present.
Questions, Mr. Riley? Did the applicant wish to speak? Questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions.
Would you come forward, sir, and identify yourself?
My name is Jeffrey Wallace, I'm here representing Jamie Wallace. He's, lives up in Ohio. I was the only one close enough to be able to get down here to make it for this meeting today. How may I help you?
Sir, I was concerned about the lack of specificity in the application, and in particular with respect to paragraphs four and five, which deal with medical facilities and fire protection plans, respectively. Can you give us any more detail?
Yes, sir, we've contacted the local fire and rescue team and have had stuff, we've had a discussion with them, had things set up. We have multiple, EMT is going to be there, and we're going to also have an area set up for if occasion does arise to where we need medical attention, proper need, proper care will be there.
So you have gotten a commitment from medical professionals for that undertaking?
Yes, sir, that's including, I know one for a fact, is my wife. She's a registered nurse with Fairfax County. She's already volunteered her time, and we have multiple other people who are volunteering their time.
Okay, and have you spoken with the local fire station regarding fire protection plans?
Yes, sir. Jamie has spoken with them. He told me instead of, for the questions call, I could, I'd have to call him up, and if you had any direct questions for him, if you want, I can give him a call so I can relay these questions to him. We have gotten all of them set up.
Do you remember the name of the fire official you talked to?
No, sir, I'd have to find out real fast. It would take me two minutes to find out, if you would like.
Any questions?
What you may want to do, if you feel inappropriate to approve this permit, it would be conditioned on the applicant providing in writing the detailed description of his fire and EMS plan for this event, and we would review that and also share it with the board. And if anyone indicated that it was not to our satisfaction, it would be the understanding that it would have to pass muster before the event could be held.
I certainly would feel much more comfortable if we could engraft those provisions into any approval that we pass on today.
That's very understandable. So what, you need me to have?
We need...
What do you need me to have?
What we'll do is we'll conduct the public hearing then, and we'll entertain the request, and presumably within the motion, we'll provide instructions, and then staff will work with you, depending on the outcome of that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Was there any other questions? All right, thanks, sir. Now conduct a public hearing on outdoor festival permit request of Hive Ministry, Utopia EDM Revival Christian Dance Festival pursuant to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 86 Festivals, Section 86-3, for an outdoor festival permit, festival will be held Friday, August 24th, 2012, from 12 noon through 12 o'clock noon Sunday, August 26th, 2012, on the grounds of, the grounds of the Cove Campground, 980 Cove Drive, Gore, Virginia, property owned by Alexander W.K. McDowell and McDowell Family LLC. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this outdoor festival permit request? Seeing no one close the public hearing, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll try to phrase a motion, and if I step out of line, hopefully Mr. Riley or Mr. Williams will get me back in line. Make a motion that we approve the outdoor festival permit request of Hive Ministries for the Revival Christian Dance Festival, with the understanding that the applicant would be obligated to provide more details regarding its plan for medical facilities, as well as its plan for fire protection, that be in writing and submitted to the county within a time that would permit the board to act on the materials therein, and if it was deemed inadequate, give the authority to the board to deny the permit at that time.
We will not be meeting again, so you'd, I think you'd have to extend that to staff.
Okay, then I would amend what I just said by giving the staff the authority to decline to approve the petition if it's not deemed, if the materials are not deemed adequate.
I think I'd be speaking properly if, it's just not details, but appropriate details.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Riley, is that clear enough? All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. If you would get in touch with staff, they'll work with you. Next is a public hearing on a proposed dedication and surplus and disposal of remaining portion owned by the county of the real property known as the Old Stevens City School property. Mr. Riley?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Tierney.
Mr. Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property that is proposed for sale is a portion, a 2.75 acre portion of the former Stevens City School property. The property that we're dealing with this evening was declared surplus by the Frederick County School System back in August of 2011, and was deeded to the Frederick County Government. As we had no viable use for the property, in March of 2012, we advertised the property for sale. In response to that advertisement, we received a single bid from the town of Stevens City in the amount of $100,000 for the property. Based on that offer, the board authorized staff to proceed with details of the sale. The town's offer had a number of conditions contained within it, and the most significant being a removal or termination of a reversionary clause that was placed on a portion of the property that was previously deeded to the town in 2007. That piece of property contains the main school building. Specifically, that clause reads, "The grantee or its assigns shall use or permit the use of the above described property solely for public or community non-commercial purposes as are intended for the benefit of the health, safety, welfare, education, recreation, cultural enlightenment, literacy, or civic awareness of the community, or any other public purpose permitted by law. And if the property ceases to be used for such purposes, it shall revert back to the grantor," which would be Frederick County. So before you tonight is a resolution that if approved would author, would number one, declare the property surplus as in accordance with the state code. It would also approve the termination of the clause, which I just read to you, and would authorize staff to proceed with actions necessary to conclude the sale. A copy of the contract for sale is included, if the board is interested, and again, the resolution is there for your consideration, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions if you have them.
Questions of Mr. Tierney? Hearing on, will conduct a public hearing, public hearing for the proposed declaration as surplus and disposal of the remaining portion owned by the county of the real property known as the Old Stevens City School property comprised of two parcels totaling approximately two and three quarters acres, 5506 and 5516 Main Street, Stevens City, Virginia, and identified as partial identification numbers 74803-A-160A and 85-A-58, and the proposed release of the reversionary clause of that portion of the real property known as the Old Stevens City School owned by the town of Stevens City, comprised of approximately one and three tenths acres, and identified as property identification number 74803-A-160. The reversionary clause provides that should the property cease to be used for public or community non-commercial purposes, as are intended for the benefit of the health, safety, welfare, education, recreation, cultural enlightenment, literacy, or civil awareness of the community, or any other public purpose permitted by the law, the property shall revert back to the county. The hearing is pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 15.2-11800, and the purpose of the hearing is to receive public comments on the declaration of the indicated property owned by the county as surplus, and approval of the sale of the property to the town of Stevens City, Virginia, and release of the reversionary clause per the terms of the real estate contract dated June 4th, 2012. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this declaration and Seeing no one, will close the public hearing. This is yours.
Mr. Chairman, unless there's any questions or comments, I would be willing to make a motion to accept the town's proposal for $100,000 for the sale of the property and the reversion, reversing the reversion clause as presented to us.
All right, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Hearing on Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Chairman votes no, but the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order, did we have to make a motion on declaring it surplus as well, or was that encompassed within Mr. Ewing's?
It's in the resolution.
I believe it was included in the resolution.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a public hearing on conditional use permit 10-11 for Joseph Bracy Sr.
Go ahead, sir.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a conditional use permit for a 199-foot monopole telecommunications facility located in the Back Creek Magisterial District on 3392 Backmount Road. The property is currently zoned RA rural areas. The adjoining properties are zoned RA rural areas, and their land uses are residential. Paying attention to the map when you're left to give you an idea, a better idea where this proposed conditional use permit will be located. It's Backmount Road. What I just circled there is the, the tile of the location of the telecommunications facility. As pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the telecommunications facility is going to be adjacent to RA zone properties, with the nearest building being approximately 800 feet from this facility. An attempt to, the Frederick County zoning ordinance requires that an applicant applying for a telecommunications facility, make an effort to co-locate existing telecommunications facilities and possible co-location structures. As the applicant has provided an inventory of the existing telecommunications facilities, and there were no other telecommunications facilities or possible co-location opportunities in this area of the county. This proposed telecommunications facility be, will be positioned to provide the existing and future land uses in this area of the county with telecommunications needs for existing and future telecommunications needs. However, I want to point out to the board, Mr. Chairman, that the Frederick County Historical Resources Advisory Board, or HRAB, had some concerns on what the location of this tower that was located to, near three, identified structures located on the Rural Landmark Survey Report. The Planet Commission held a public hearing on this application on July 18, 2012. There was no, there were no public comments on this application at all. However, the Planet Commission did discuss the HRB's comments, and also the comments about lighting on the telecommunications tower as a whole. The Planet Commission approved, or they recognized that the site was located within a wooded area, and their request was, of the applicant was, to go ahead and try to screen the cabinet. We're going to, obviously not going to be able to screen the whole telecommunications tower, but the cabinet and associated accessory parts of that communication facility. The applicant understood that, also the, regarding the lighting on the telecommunications tower, I know it comes before this board, we get questions, the staff gets questions about when is the lighting required or not, as you're well aware of, that the conditional use permit provides that all reviewing agency comments will be followed after we get approved. The airport authority has requested a light, the applicant understands that and will comply with that. With that, Mr. Chairman, the Planet Commission found this, recommended approval of this conditional use permit with the following conditions. Number one, our review agency comments and requirements shall be complied with at all times. Number two, the tire should be available for co-location of personal wireless service providers. Number three, a minor site plant should be approved by Frederick County. Number four, the tire shall be removed by the applicant or property owner within 12 months of abandonment of operation. Number five, in the event the telecommunications tire is not erected within 12 months, the approval of the CUP, and the CUP will be deemed invalid. And number six, any expansion or modification of this use will require a new conditional use permit. Ms. Stacy, Tracy Anderson from the AT&amp;T is here representing, or representing AT&amp;T, and I'll have, I'll happy to answer any questions you may have on this proposed conditional use permit.
Questions of staff?
Just one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
It was a letter from Stacy Anderson, I mean, to Stacy Anderson, from VDOT. There was a letter from Stacy Anderson, I mean, to Stacy Anderson from VDOT. Did those issues get addressed?
Those issues, Mr. DeHaven, will be addressed at the site plan process?
I didn't see them referenced in the conditions. Thank you, sir.
The questions? Thank you, sir. Was anyone here from AT&amp;T? Did they wish to speak?
If you have questions.
Questions for the applicant? Well, actually, not the applicant, but the antenna. Thank you. We'll now conduct a public hearing for conditional use permit 10-11 for Joseph Racy Sr., an AT&amp;T Mobility for 199-foot monopole telecommunications facility. This property is located at 3392 Back Mountain Road, is identified with property identification number 59-A-6 in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this conditional use Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. This is Back Creek. And Mr. Lawton is not here, so what is the pleasure of the Board?
Chairman, I've moved for approval. Conditions as stated.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
One of the interesting things here, if you read all of this, it talks about giving the airport authority of the approval for the lighting. Well, if you go read the comments from the Winchester Regional Airport, it says for towers between 150 feet and 199 feet AGL, the Winchester Regional Airport requests all structures to be marked and lighted in accordance with FAA Advisory Circular. And in the past, we have always done that. It always looks like they're playing games at 199 feet when the requirement's 200, and we've always had these lit. And I would like to, I guess, amend the motion perhaps to add another condition that this tower be lighted in accordance with the authorities.
All right, we have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Supervisor Spicer. Any discussion on the amendment?
What is the amendment?
To add light as required under Section...
Add light, okay.
Per the request of the Winchester Regional Airport Authority.
Thank you.
The other discussion? All right, we're voting on the amendment. Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is another public hearing, an ordinance amendment, Chapter 144, subdivision of land, Article 5, design standards. Go ahead, Mr. Ruddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We are here this evening again for a public hearing on this drain field amendment request. If you recall, it was initiated several months ago to try and minimize, if you will, the requirements for large lots that are part of a minor subdivision. Again, this would only apply for lots that are part of a minor subdivision. Currently, the County zoning ordinance requires that all lots that are being subdivided are provided with the drain field in addition to the 100% reserve. So basically, this request would allow that to not happen. The requirement for the all lots to be covered with the drain field in addition to the reserve was a follow-on from the rural area study back in 2009 and subsequent work with the Health Department. When the item was discussed through the process, the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission both endorsed the request. When it came to the Board for our discussion, there was a little bit of discussion about remaining lots that existed without an approved health system. And then we moved it forward, though, through the public hearing process. When it got to the Planning Commission, the Commission recognized that it was primarily a kind of an economic issue with regards to the easing it through the process, if you will, on the example being that a 20-acre lot in size, obviously, if somebody was doing a family subdivision or a minor subdivision, that would be additional expense associated with the subdivision. So it's a pretty straightforward request modification to the subdivision ordinance. We're here, it's a public hearing this evening. Staff would be happy to answer any additional questions that may remain, and we're seeking action here this evening.
Questions?
I might like to explore just a little bit, Mr. Chairman. Are you proposing that the requirement be eliminated or delayed?
Which requirement would that be? The requirement for Health Department approval?
For the Health Department permit for the partial.
And as...
Do you propose to delay that requirement or eliminate that requirement?
For a minor subdivision to occur and leaving a residual greater than 20 acres in size, it would eliminate the requirement to have the Health Department sign off on that subdivision plat. It would not eliminate the requirement to have a health system in place should that lot be developed with a residence in the future.
So a subsequent party who wanted to live on that lot would be impacted in no way other than they have to do what they need to do to develop it, get a health permit?
That would be work with the Health Department to obtain an approved health system on the lot. Again, the lot would be greater than 20 acres in size.
Some of us are torn between the goal that we had at the time that we did this, to not have lots that people could not live on, to being sensitive to the creator of a 20-acre lot or bigger, to not cause them to have to get, add additional cost to the transaction when they had no intention of developing and living on it. So...
Very clearly in your...
Help you can give. Both are worthwhile goals.
Very much so, and I think the agricultural lot provision that existed back in the day in the RA was problematic in how that was being used. And I think the goal and intent of the RA study was appropriate, and the requirement for the health system has worked well. Obviously, I think based upon the request, there's recognition that in some cases that does create the additional expense upfront for a minor rural subdivision. And I think the minor rural subdivision component of it may be something that is helpful to the Board of Supervisors as opposed to it being a major rural subdivision. When I say that, it means simply limiting the scope of the lots to which this exemption would apply.
Other questions of staff? Go ahead.
Chairman, carry a little further. Okay, so we had a 25-acre parcel, we did a five-acre family division off of it. The residual parcels, 20 acres, we don't require them to identify or secure a health permit at that point.
That's correct.
That's what you're proposing, if I understand it correctly. So then at some point in the future, we want to divide a couple more five-acre family divisions from that 20. We've already exempted it from securing a health permit. At what point?
No, that subdivision there would require then that the health permit is obtained because those lots are all less than 20 acres.
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying that at a point in time when a division is requested of that 20-acre or better residual parcel that drops it below 20 acres, at that time, the Health Department permit would be required to be identified. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're delaying it, we're not eliminating the requirement?
In that scenario. That's correct. Again, it's part of the subdivision process. I think it's important.
So let's say that we don't want to subdivide it, it's 20 acres, we exempted it at the point where it was 20 acres, someone decides they want to build on the 20 acres, they want to sell 20 acres. They're going to sell 20 acres without a permit?
The way it is set up, yes, that lot has been created, it's greater than 20 acres in size, it was part of a minor rural subdivision, and there's no Health Department approval on that lot.
DRC is very thorough when they talk about these things, so I would assume that you all discussed the fact that you're potentially creating a lot that would never be required to secure a health permit. Thinking that once you apply for a building permit, you're going to have to get a health permit. I guess I'm more concerned with where we were before when a lot, a legally recorded lot, could be sold, transferred potentially multiple times, people assume that they can build on it, but not necessarily so. I guess that's what my concern is.
Understood, and I think maybe if this is something, notation on plats are often helpful when we do so in minor rural subdivisions with regards to VDOT and streets, this may be, that may be an option in this case. I apologize, I wasn't at the DRC, Candace was obviously involved with that, so I don't know the depth of their discussion. But notes on plats are often very, very helpful to clarify, to clarify items that revolve around it, such as airports and roads.
Assuming informed folks actually read their plats.
Help me stay on the reservation here. A larger tract of land, 75 acres. Five acres goes to somebody that wants to build a house, and two heirs or whatever else get 35 acres. Neither of those has to have a health permit.
Again, it's a minor subdivision, so when we have three lots or less, any lots that are created out of that, okay, and that are greater than 20 acres in size, would not have to have the Health Department approval.
It only applies to the parent tract. So if you have 75 acres, you pull off a five-acre lot, you pull off a 35-acre lot, and then you have the remaining, the residual is the parent tract. So it's only that residual parent tract which would be, help me out with the math here, about 40 acres in size that would be exempt. Under your scenario, if you've got 75-acre tract, you pull off five acres, you pull off 30 acres, then the remaining parcel, the 40 acres that's left, that is the residual, and that 40-acre parcel is what would be exempt because it's the parent tract. That's what would be exempt from this one subdivision exercise. So the 35-acre or the 30-acre you talked about family lot, that's required to have a health system. If you have the 40-acre tract and somebody else down the road wants to subdivide that, you start the subdivision process over. We first look at the density, then you say, okay, five acres requires health system. The remaining 35 acres in that scenario does not, it's exempt. So it's a...
So this parent tract has to be identified at the time of subdivision in my scenario with three lots?
Correct, correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ruddy, the Health Department permit for a drain field, used to be that that had a time limit where it had to be renewed so often. Is that still, once the drain field is approved, is that, is there a time limit on that permit?
In all honesty, I'm not familiar, Ms. Lawrence.
It needs to be renewed, or...
What the Health Department says is if they grant an approval, they'll make sure that you get a working health system, but they're not guaranteeing the type of system that you're going to use. So if you get a subdivision approved and it has a health approval, when you come in to build your house, the Health Department's going to honor that subdivision approval, but you're still going to have to put a health system in that meets today's requirements.
So, okay, because what I'm getting at, it used to be you could get a drain field approved, but if you didn't renew it every so many years, it would expire and you no longer, you had to reapply in whatever the current standards were, so it sounds like...
That's the same way. They still do the same thing.
If the old ordinance said requirements would not apply to tracks subdivided for agricultural purposes, and we reworded to do this, didn't it already say that you didn't have to? If it was an agricultural purpose?
Previously, yes. If it was agriculture, you didn't have road requirements, you didn't have drain field requirements, and that's what we eliminated because it was being abused.
The old wording would allowed you, would have exempted any parcel over 20 acres. So you could have taken a 100-acre parcel, divided it into five 20-acre lots, and you wouldn't need a drain field on any of them in theory. So this tightens it up. It allows that exemption only for the parent tract.
Makes a little different timing issue. Okay, other questions of staff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll conduct a public hearing on an ordinance amendment, Chapter 145, 144, excuse me, subdivision of land, Article 5, design standards, 144-20, sewer and water service, revision to exempt lots greater than 20 acres from the individual on-lot system requirements, drain fields in the RA district. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? We have someone.
Gary Oates, Gray Wolf Land Surveying. I'm actually the one that presented this to the DRC, and it was a case of late last winter, I had a client that had a 40-acre tract, and they were cutting off a two-acre family subdivision for their son. With the fees and everything that's associated now, it's about a $3,500 process to cut off a lot now just for a family subdivision. By the time you figure your calls for public, for the drain field survey, the cemental fees, the $500 application fee at the Health Department, and at that time, Mr. Chairman and I were discussing whether or not we were still required to do, the 20-acre tract would have been excluded as it used to be, or if, under the new regulations, the parent tract would have to have a drain field, which would be an additional drain field, application fee, basically another $2,500 on top of what we already spent just to get two acres cut off for the son. So that's why this was presented, was we thought it was a case where the 38 acres that was going to be left from here was not being developed, it was still going to be used for agricultural purposes, and it just seemed like a lot of waste of money to get a drain field permit for that site at this time. Now, if someone were to come in later and want to build on that site, they'd have to get a drain field permit. If I was representing them as a surveyor or Realtor, one of the things I would tell someone looking at it would be, get a perk test prior to buying it, you know, put that as a condition in your contract, just like we do rental property today. But it's not something here to circumvent our, excuse me, ordinance, to try and get out of something on someone doing a major subdivision, or try to create a loophole for developers to come in and pick away at a piece of property and not have to get a drain field slated eventually. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
One other thing, back to Mr. Fisher, about the health permit. The health permit's good for 18 months, and you can renew it one time, or you can apply for a certification letter. The permit allows you to keep the same drain field as what was proposed by the AOSC. The certification letter only guarantees you a number of bedrooms. So whenever you turn that certification letter in, whether it's two years from now or 10 years from now, the Health Department will honor the number of bedrooms, but you may have to come in with a different type of system to meet the current guidelines.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. A question for staff, whomever.
Yes, sir.
As recited, in trying not to cause people to incur costs unnecessarily if one were to support this amendment, but had concerns about what it did elsewhere, staff is highly comfortable that it only accomplishes the delaying tactic that fits the circumstance and Pandora's box doesn't get opened somewhere or other. Was this the best way to handle it?
Yes, I believe this was a good approach. I think the issue that existed prior to the RA study was resolved with the changes to the RA, and I think this provides just a little bit of flexibility that's needed while still ensuring that those major subdivisions do not occur without the appropriate Health
So under the example given, under the old ordinance, if that track had been an agricultural purpose, it would not have required a health permit?
Are we talking about the 40-acre tract? Yes.
So it was not retained for agricultural purpose? So it was not retained for agricultural purposes? I mean, I'm trying to figure out why we're here. If it was an agricultural track, the old ordinance took care of it, did it not?
I, I think we have a difference. The RA language within the zoning ordinance was modified significantly based on the RA study. And this was a residual piece of language in the subdivision ordinance that may not have been as cleaned up as, as, along with the RA study work, if that makes sense.
See, when I entered the meeting, I thought I was having a slight expansion of the code. Now I almost think that there's a restriction instead of an expansion. So I'm trying to resort my thoughts out here. I don't think anybody at the, behind this counter has a problem with the situation we're trying to deal with. I have some doubts about whether we got there or not after this situation is taken care of. Anyway, maybe this is the best we can do. Anybody else have a question, staff?
Just one. The notation on the plat referenced, which we've done in the past, which I think is the right thing to do, even though I'm amazed that folks don't read them. I don't see that in, in the proposed language. And that may or may not cause a problem, Mr. Williams, with where we are in the process.
Would it, would it not be best if the, if the piece of land being talked about had no dwelling right on it? This fits better than if it, than if it does have one, correct?
Well, I would say that any property that's created has a dwelling right associated with it. So even the residual 20-plus acres has a dwelling right associated with it. So maybe it's the health system right is perhaps what we're looking to clarify about.
Which, again, fits best if that piece tract of land had no dwelling right, correct? There already was one dwelling right, it doesn't fit as well.
If you don't have a dwelling right, you don't get to do a subdivision, whether it's two acres, five acres, or 20 acres.
Dwelling right and you subdivide it under the revision, the lot you created would be, that to be developed would have to have a, presumably less than 20 acres, would have a, a health permit, but the residual property in excess of 20 acres didn't have one, won't have to have one.
It's still, it's, it's still deemed a dwelling right because you're limited, you're limited to the number of subdivisions you can do based on the five-acre density. So if you don't have any five-acre density dwelling rights left, you can't do any more subdividing. And that, that's, that's on the books so that, so that every parcel in the county has a dwelling right. The challenge we're trying to avoid is to make sure every parcel can actually get a health system to go with that dwelling right. And the belief was if you're more than 20 acres, you've got a dwelling right inherently because you have a parcel of land. It's whether or not you have your approved health system today or defer that its cost.
Approved septic, should I not, in words instead of dwelling right? I should have used approved septic. So if there was an approved septic on a tract of land, this doesn't do much. The, the piece of land needed to not have an approved septic field on it.
I, I'm not connecting.
Well, if you had a tract of land and you wanted to peel a lot off of it in excess of 25 acres, I presume, because the lot would have to be five acres, correct? Or the two? You, the, the lot created has to have a, a drain field on it, and we're trying to make it so that the residual lot does not. But if there was one already there and it went with the smaller parcel, I'm not sure we did a good thing here. The presumption would be that there was not one there already, I think, for it to, to make sense and to keep somebody from incurring costs that they didn't need. But maybe I don't make a lot of sense with that. Okay. Any other questions, staff? Thanks, sir. What's the pleasure of the ward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
A motion to approve, is there a second? Second, Mr. Chairman. Second, Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher. Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
No.
Chair votes no, but the motion passes. Next is a discussion, Stonewall Warehousing Site Plan at Stonewall Industrial Park.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In effect, to keep the board appraised of development activity in vicinity of your pro, uh, proposed Route 37, proposed site plans and subdivisions, division, excuse me, are presented to the Board of Supervisors for information. There's no board reaction, or, excuse me, action required with this, with this site plan. This proposed site plan will be located on McGee Road in Stonewall Industrial Park. The site plan is located within the path of a proposed Route 37. Plans for Stonewall Industrial Park did not accommodate the right-of-way of Route 37 when the industrial park was approved. If I can turn your attention to the screen on your left, obviously, this is, the outlined in white area is where the proposed Route 37 path currently is. Does, it does intersect with the property we're talking about tonight. And in your, in your agenda, there's a site plan that also shows the parcel and shows the approximate where Route 37 would intersect with this, this property. If I can get it up here for you. There it is, right there. Again, this is for information, to keep the board appraised of it. I will make note that Mr. Gary Oates of Gray Wolf is here to answer any questions. Should you have any questions on this proposed development? And also Mr. Tom Gilpin, the owner of the industrial park is also here.
Questions, the staff?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. How, how concrete is the proposed right-of-way? Certainly, there are any number of variables that are going to affect the timetable of when 37 is, is eventually built. When that happens, when we get to that stage, is the proposed route going to be changed to accommodate structures that, that have sprung up between the initial path and, and when the actual construction begins?
No, sir. I, I will just point out, I, I believe, Mr. Spicer, you're at the planning, I think the same question was brought to the planning commission, and I'm not telling the board anything we don't know, so I'll make it as quick as possible. Route 37 has been on our comprehensive policy plan for many years. We do have the route, you know, more or less set out. I will note that this lot 12 that you see before you tonight was brought before the Board of Supervisors back in 2006 for the subdivision to get approved. And the reason that was, I think, the first activity, land use activity other than rezoning or such that we brought for information because we recognize, and so did the owner, that Route 37 was going to impact on the land. And from that date forward, we have brought stuff to the, to the board for just the information. Mr. Spicer, Mr. Collins, weren't on the board at the time, our board members have seen that.
If I can comment, Mr. Spicer, the, we did, we did a centerline study. So we have adopted the centerline of Route 37, so we're not deviating.
Right.
We felt it was appropriate, once we adopted that centerline, to follow it and adhere to it so that everybody, everybody's dealing with the same thing. We're not going to move it from one property to the next. Everyone knows where it goes.
Mr. Chairman, or Chairman, how many of these informational presentations have, have, have you provided to the board? I.e., how many, how many developments have occurred in the impending path of 37 since the centerline was demarcated? Do, do you know?
Since I've been here, it's been two. This one and also the subdivision that was done, the impact on this. Other parts of Kania, they come up with rezonings and other land use actions, we identify them, but there's two we brought for information that impacted here.
Thank you.
I think it's safe to say that if the lot's sold and if the lot's developed, the construction of Route 37, as we envision it today, just got harder. More expensive. Anybody else have a comment? Appreciate the update from staff. Board DAs on reports, are there any? Is there anyone here who would like to address the board on any topic? Sheen, we'll close, says in comment, force the meeting, Board of Supervisors comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ewing.
Move for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor Fisher. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Meeting adjourned.
It's debated, 16% left. Going out of battery. We had 16.
16?
That ain't bad.
That's 20 to curl up. Sounds like a mighty difference.